Welcome to the Planning Commission, June 20, 2024. Before we start, we need to establish quorum in order to do so. Commissioner Bella, I need you to make a request to the Commission that you join remotely because of personal emergency. Can you please do so?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, I would like to request to join the meeting by Zoom for a personal emergency, not feeling well, have a cold and fever, so going to be joining remotely tonight. I'd like to make a request to join by Zoom for the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the request?
I'll move to approve the request for Commissioner Bella to participate remotely.
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call?
Newton?
Hi.
Bela, can he vote? I guess so.
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Chair Jansen?
Hi. Motion passes. We have quorum. Do we need to do a roll call? I think technically we do. Please do.
I'll call the roll. Okay. You need to call the meeting to order.
I will call the meeting to order, yes. And please, can I have a roll call?
Uh huh. Kelly is absent. Newton?
Here.
Okay. Bela?
Present by Zoom.
Swift?
Here.
Pfeffer?
Here.
Chair Jansen?
Here. Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? And if no, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, Newton?
Hi.
Bela?
Hi.
Swift?
Yes.
Pfeffer?
Yes.
Chair Jansen?
Aye. I'll read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert Rules of Order, and the Planning Commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at the Planning Commission meetings. The Planning Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of the Planning Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all the interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should, one, limit their presentation to three minutes; two, write their comments by email as described above; three, state their views and concerns succinctly; and four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first, directly or via email at planning@thetownoffairfax.org to be entered into the records. With that, I think we are going to move to public comments for items that are not on the agenda, if there are any. Not seeing any.
I see no hands online, Chair.
Sorry?
There are no hands online.
There are no hands online. We'll close public comments for non-agenda items. There are no items on the consent agenda, so we will go to the public hearings. Item number one, 152 Dominga, can I get a staff report?
Oh, we already approved the agenda. I forgot that 60 Dominga, I was supposed to put it first on the agenda because she has a flight to catch. Is that correct? And if she's not first, we won't hear her till next month. I apologize, so.
Okay, can I get a motion to change the agenda, switch item one and two?
I'll make a motion to switch item one and two.
I'll second.
Public hearing items. Did I hear Newton second that? Okay. All right, Newton?
Yeah, aye.
Bela? Bela?
Aye.
Swift?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye.
Sorry about that, everybody. It just came to me when I looked at.
With that, we will start with 60 Dominga Avenue. Can I get a staff report, please?
Okay. Ready? Okay, so this is 60 Dominga. The project encompasses a remodel of a 1,661-square-foot, two-story, two-bedroom, two-bathroom single-family residence, converting it into a 1,186-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bathroom single-family residence on the first floor with a 472-square-foot studio accessory dwelling unit with a kitchenette and bathroom on the second floor accessed by the existing covered stairway at the rear of the structure. The accessory dwelling unit is permitted by state law and local ADU ordinances and will be processed separately. So this property has a long history, but let's suffice it to say that when this owner purchased it, the last inspection, it was under construction. It was kind of abandoned, and the last inspection signed off by the building inspector was in 1984. And the owner had not followed the rules through the whole, you know, they kept stopping his construction. He'd get a permit, he wouldn't follow it. It was kind of a nightmare, and then it just sat there. So on June 6 of 2023, the building official issued a permit for water damage repair around the windows of the upstairs bathroom and the ceiling inside the entry door. In mid-2023, staff visited the site because the work was continuing to occur on the structure beyond what the issued permit allowed. At that point, we inspected the interior of the house, and we determined that the project constituted a 50% remodel because so much of the drywall had been removed, and some of the construction behind the drywall appeared not to meet the building code and would have to be corrected. And so we advised her that she needed to come to the Planning Commission. The property is also located in flood zone AE, so we also advised the owner that it was possible that the project, because it was a 50% remodel, might have to include raising the first level of the house at least one foot above the flood elevation. However, the owner had an elevation certificate prepared that shows that most of the first floor is above the flood elevation, and only the rear kitchen area that you step down to is at the base flood elevation of 107.5. We checked with FEMA, and their 50% remodel definition is based on the cost of construction, not the square footage that's being worked on. And the applicant and her contractor feel confident that they're going to be able to present information to FEMA that's going to result in them making the determination that it's not a 50% remodel by FEMA's regulations. But we're just putting it on the record that if if they're not correct, she'll have to come back if that back area has to be raised up in height, if it changes the height of the house in any way. So there actually are very few changes being made to the exterior of the house. The project does require a conditional use permit because the site's only 3,750 square feet in size and 38 feet wide. And it was made in that configuration at a time when that was legal, but now it's legal nonconforming. In order to comply with today's regulations, the site would have to be 5,500 square feet in size and 60 feet wide because it's located in the RD 5.5-7 zone. So the restoration of the dilapidated residential structure and conversion to two units without changing the existing setbacks, the height, the lot coverage, or the floor area ratio while bringing the parking into compliance with the minimum parking requirements complies, conforms to the 2023 to 2031 Fairfax General Plan and the zoning ordinance. And staff feels we are able to recommend findings to approve the conditional use permit for this project. It's definitely going to improve the property. Because it's a 50% remodel, it also requires a design review permit. In order to approve a design review permit, the code has a bunch of, a number of criteria that you have to use to review the project. And the only changes to the exterior of the house will be the relocation of the front entry door, construction of a new front entry deck, installation of four new windows in the front wall of the house, removal of the only two windows on the south side of the house, and installation of one clear-story window on the upper floor in the ADU bathroom. The addition of the windows and the relocation of the front door and the construction of the deck will increase the articulation of the front facade of the building. The proposed exterior changes are minimal, but along with the exterior color palette that's being proposed. Did I put that out in front of you? Yes. So basically, the siding is going to be matched with the existing siding that's there now. It's kind of a light blue. The front door roof flashing window and door trim will be painted gray. The window frames will be white fiberglass Milgard. The roof will remain as it is now, a combination of asphalt shingles in light brown over sections with a slope of 7 to 12, and a light gray rolled asphalt on the sections that have a slope of 2 to 12. The back stairs and deck will be dark gray. The front deck railing will be black TimberTech aluminum. Front deck and stairs will be TimberTech PVC in brown, and the front ending over the front door will be Sunbrella silica stone. So the proposed exterior structures are minimal, but along with the color palette being proposed, will refresh the structure and result in a residential building that will complement the surrounding neighborhood that includes many other eclectic residential buildings. The project requires a tree removal permit to remove two small laurel trees, a cedar tree and a privet in the front yard, and a second privet in the backyard, while the redwood tree and a walnut tree on the site will be retained. The Fairfax Tree Committee reviewed the tree removal permit at their April 24, 2024 meeting and recommended that the Planning Commission approve the tree removal permit application. The project does require variances because the town code prohibits the location of required parking in the side yard setbacks, and it requires that at least one of the required three parking spaces for a residence must be covered. The very small size and width of the property are the features that make it difficult to provide parking in compliance with the zoning regulations. While the property did have a covered space at the rear of the property at one point in time, the structure was built on both the side and the rear property lines and probably encroached upon the small amount of private outdoor space available in the rear yard of the site. The adoption by the town in 1973 of combined side yard setback regulations has made it impossible for the required three parking spaces to be provided at the front of the site unless a variance is granted to allow the spaces to be located within the minimum north side property line setback and within the combined 15-foot side yard setback. The only comments we received from other agencies is from the Ross Valley Sanitary District. The project, the project triggers and, triggers Ross Valley Sanitary District testing and certification requirements and will require a sewer lateral permit for all laterals, including the ADU. But I thought the owner told me that's already been done. Is that true? Okay, okay. I'm probably remembering a different project. The Ross Valley Fire Department is requiring that a sprinkler system be installed. And we, we talked to the building inspector, and he verified, this was recommended by Commissioner Swift, that the building code is going to require a new light adjacent to the relocated front door. And so I was under the impression that there were going to be no changes to the exterior lighting, but there will be one new light. And so we're adding a condition, well, we're changing our condition in the resolution 2023-10, but we're recommending that you approve the project by adopting resolution 2023-10 with one change to condition 23. We want to add, so it reads right now, "Any exterior lighting that has the fixtures replaced must be replaced with dark sky compliant, fully shielded, et cetera, et cetera." We want to add in, "Any exterior lighting that has the fixtures replaced or any new exterior lighting fixtures must be dark sky compliant," and then go on. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Swift?
Just back to the reso, it had, I think it's number 13 on the reso that references Mountain View Road on page five.
Thank you.
One of the Ross Valley.
Yep.
Requirements. And I don't know if that was intended to be in there in referencing Dominga, or it was.
No, it complies to every piece of property in town. You're supposed to keep your vegetation away from your address numbers, so. It's one of our standard conditions.
Okay. And then I'll have a question for the applicant related to the fencing when they come up.
We'll get to that, yeah. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, does the applicant want to address the commission? Press the button for the mic.
Hi, that's better. Does anybody have any questions for me, or do I say something, or how does this work?
You may present if you have something to share with us, and we can ask you questions if there are any questions.
I'm just trying to make an ugly house a little bit nicer looking and make it a little more comfortable for me to spend the rest of my life in, and also the ADU is to help my children stay in Moran. Oops, the mayor may not end up living there, but at this point, that's the plan.
Okay, thank you. We do have one question. Commissioner Swift? You had a question?
Sorry, I had a question related to the fence. My understanding is the driveway is going to have to be changed, and so that's going to impact the fence that's there. The fence that's there, I believe, has a cement base to it or columns that are going to have to be removed or changed to change the driveway. Is that correct?
That is correct. The driveway is being widened to, I think, to 20 feet, which is the maximum allowable. And the fence will be adjusted accordingly. There'll be a little bit of the original fence remaining, but most of it will be gone.
Okay, I was just wondering, since most of it would be gone, if the remaining fence could then be just lowered to the required four-foot height and not need any change to that?
Are you wondering if any of the, of the of the mortar pillars would have, are in that section that's remaining?
Right, and so that the fence would have to be, the fence could be lowered to the four-feet height and not maintain the, the height that it is now, since most of it is going to have to be taken out for that driveway.
Yeah, I haven't measured it to see how much, where the section that's going to be remaining hits the posts. I don't know, but there's at least one at the corner of the property.
The plan is showing that there's three, but I don't know if that, yeah.
So to answer your question, do we have other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we will, thank you for speaking to us. Are there any public comments on this agenda item?
Dominga is, hello, Rick Hamer, downtown Fairfax, and indirectly associated with Dominga because I am at School Street for another seven days. And Dominga is where we're headed. And this project would make a great neighbor. It seems perfect. It seems well thought out. They're almost across the street, but from where we're going to have a presence, and I think that the Planning Commission should look at this favorably and approve this project as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
I have no hands on Zoom, Chair Jansen.
Okay, thereby we close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission. Do we want to discuss? Do we have a motion?
Just confirming that I'd be ready to make a motion. I appreciate when these remodels come in. Keep the structure within the existing footprint.
Through the chair, Chair, sorry.
Commissioner Newton?
Thank you, Chair Jansen. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Pfeffer, and you know, what a great little neighborhood, you know. And a fabulous little spot right there, so more in favor of this.
Any other? No? You want to proceed, make a motion?
Yep. I would make a motion to approve resolution number 2023-10, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 24-07 for a conditional use permit, design review permit, tree removal permit, setback variance, and covered parking variance for the remodel and upgrade of the existing single-family residence at 60 Dominga Avenue into a single-family residence and accessory dwelling unit with an amendment to condition number 23 of the resolution so that the first sentence now says, "Any exterior lighting that has fixtures replaced or any new exterior lighting fixtures shall be dark sky compliant, fully shielded, and emit no light above the horizontal plane with no sag or drop lenses, side light panels, or uplight panels, as well as compliance with color temperature to minimize blue-rich lighting."
And can I make an addition to that, to the correction to number 13, to remove the reference to Mountain View?
I will accept that amendment. Thank you.
And with that, I'll second.
All right, Newton?
Aye.
Bela?
Aye.
Swift?
Yes.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Chair Jansen?
Aye. Motion passes. There is a 10-day appeal period by making a verified application to the town clerk in the manner described. And with that, we'll move to the second agenda item, which is listed as number one on the agenda, 152.
Is that correct?
152.
152.
Okay. Okay, this project consists of a 515-square-foot, two-bedroom, a bonus room, one bathroom, second-story addition to an existing 1,159-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bathroom one-story, single-family residence, converting it into a 1,674-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom, single-family residence. The project includes relocating the front entry porch from the northeast corner of the residence to the southeast corner to widen the driveway to 20 feet to provide an additional parking space at the front of the site out of the minimum required five-foot and the combined 15-foot side yard setbacks, basically bringing it into compliance with the required, into compliance with the required number and orientation of parking spaces. The project includes reducing the fence height of the approximately eight-foot-tall front fence to the permitted four-foot, four feet. So the site is only 3,750 square feet in size and 37.5 feet wide, while the code for the RD 5.5-7 zone where the property is located requires a single-family residence to be on a site that's 5,500 square feet in size and 60 feet wide. In order to approve a conditional use permit, the Planning Commission must be able to make the following findings. The location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the use conform to the general plan and the land use designations for the project site and, okay, and to the objective zoning standards and objective design standards that apply to the proposed use at the proposed location. The approval of the use permit must not, cannot, shall not constitute a grant of special privilege and shall not contravene the doctrines of equity and equal treatment. The development and use of the property as approved under the use permit shall not create a public nuisance arising from the emission of odor, dust, gas, noise, vibration, smoke, heat, or glare at a level exceeding ambient conditions or applicable performance standards, or cause significant adverse physical or environmental effects to abutting or adjoining properties in the surrounding neighborhood, or create undue or excessive burdens in the use and enjoyment thereof, any or all of which effects are substantially beyond that which might occur without approval or issuance of the use permit. That approval of the use permit is not contrary to those objective goals or objective standards pertinent to the particular use and location and contained or set forth in the general plan, the zoning ordinance, any master plan, development plan, or other plan or policy officially adopted by the town. An approval of the use permit will result in an equal or better development of the premises than would otherwise be the case, and that the approval is in the public interest and for the protection or enhancement of the community. The findings cannot be made for this conditional use permit because the project exceeds the objective floor area ratio maximum of .40 permitted by the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the project does not result in a residence that's similar to the majority of residences in the immediate area and surrounding neighborhood. And permitting it would be a grant of special privilege. Granting exceptions to the floor area ratio objective condition could lead to a change in the Dominga Avenue neighborhood, an area of smaller homes on small lots, which is contrary to the residents' vision for the town contained in their general plan and zoning ordinance. And construction of a project that complies with the .40 floor area ratio would result in better development of the site with a house that fits into the neighborhood better than a house that exceeds that limit. The project as designed requires an exception to the floor area ratio. And the town code requires that you be able to make the following findings in order to approve a floor area ratio exception. An exception can be granted to prevent or minimize inconsistency with the floor area of adjacent or neighboring properties. It can be granted to assist with the provision of adequate off-street parking. It can be granted if the lot is one acre or greater in size, and it can be granted provided that the granting of such an exception would not be a grant of special privilege or be inconsistent with the intent of the general plan or the zoning ordinance. The code indicates that an exception that meets all of the above conditions may be granted by the Planning Commission, provided the total floor area shall not exceed 5,000 square feet. So the applicants are requesting a floor area ratio exception to exceed the permitted .40 FAR by .04% to construct a 515-square-foot second-story addition. So a total, they're proposing a total floor area ratio of .44. The staff advised them in writing a couple of times that we were not going to be able to support this and that, you know, findings couldn't be made to grant it, but they still chose to go forward. The, we believe the code language makes it clear that in order to approve an exception to the .40 floor area ratio regulations, adjacent or neighboring properties must already have FARs of .44 or greater. The granting of the exception must be necessary to meet the minimum parking requirements. The site must be one acre or greater in size, and the exception to the .40 FAR would not be inconsistent with the intent of the general plan or the zoning ordinance. You know, it's not, it doesn't have the right size for an exception. We looked at the square footages of other homes in the neighborhood, and it reveals that out of the 64 properties on the Dominga Avenue Bridge Court Court Lane neighborhood, 54 properties have an FAR of .4 or below. And only 16% of the properties have an FAR over .40, and those were, you know, they're, they exceeded the .40 before the .40 was adopted. And of the immediately adjacent homes, there's only one that's at .40. The rest are at .25 or below. So the properties abutting this site, none of them are over .40. And we believe that eliminating the 169 square feet of the second-story bonus room with maybe some other minor adjustments would bring the FAR of the project down to the permitted .40. So we are unable to make findings for approval. We are able to make findings to deny the requested exception to the .40. The project is a 50% remodel. It also requires a design review permit. The design of the project is wonderful. It's very articulated. It really improves the exterior and the. It really improves the exterior and the design of this house. It meets all the criteria of the design review section of the code. The gabled roof proposed for the new second story in replacement of the first-story existing mansard roof with a complementing gabled roof will substantially change the appearance of the existing house, creating a more articulated exterior, improving the exterior appearance and appearance and complementing the architecture of the neighboring residences. The color and materials palette is very nice and we think that meets the criteria. The lot coverage is also, is already well beyond the permitted .30. It's at .50. And the applicants are proposing to replace 265 square feet of existing impervious surfaces in the yard of the residence with pervious material, reducing the lot coverage. Replacing the front patio and walkways will also reduce the lot, taken altogether, it will reduce the lot, reduce the lot coverage from .50 to .40. So therefore, the project does not require approval of a lot coverage variance because it's improving the existing legal non-conforming condition. The project also will bring the existing legal non-conforming parking into compliance with the required number of parking spaces. The code requires three, but they can't be in tandem with each other. So right now, there's three in a covered garage at the back of the site, but they're all in tandem. So widening the driveway and putting one, you know, parallel to the driveway will provide the third required space. We received no specific conditions from any of the agencies. So we're recommending that you conduct your public hearing. You ask the applicants if they're willing to mutually agree with the Planning Commission on a continuance of their application. Continuance will extend the amount of time in which the town has to process the application under the Permit Streamlining Act for a period not to exceed 90 days to comply with direction from the Planning Commission to revise the project so that it complies with the .40 floor-area ratio maximum. And then we recommend you take action to continue the project to a date certain, July, the next meeting, July 18, 2024. But we are also putting forth the alternative recommendation. If the applicants are not willing to, to agree to a continuance, that you deny the application and we've attached a resolution for denial. That would conclude my report.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. So the findings that you listed out, that four-part test seem very specific. You know, part of our hearing process, at the end, applicants are able to appeal any action we take to the town council. Does the town council have to make those same findings or are they able to approve projects that don't meet the findings?
That's a legal question. I mean, anyone can appeal it. Does the council have to make the findings? I would assume, okay, maybe I should put it this way. I have seen councils not, not make the required findings and approve things in the time I've been here.
Yeah.
I don't know whether that's advice that would be given by our current legal counsel to our town council.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just curious about that. And then are there any other changes that the town staff or the applicants have talked about even informally that would adjust the total floor area ratio?
No. But we're open to any changes that get it to .40, you know, unless it, unless it keeps that mansard roof that I don't like.
Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. So this doesn't really pertain to this application, but there's a reference to, and you've got the language about it being no greater than 5,000 square feet total in 17136050.
Good eye. That's incorrect. It's an error in the zone, in the code.
Right, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, they lowered it to 3,500 and that section didn't get changed.
So can we make a conforming change at some point to?
It's on our list. It's on our list of corrections that are going to be presented to you in the coming, in the near future.
Awesome.
Right, Planning Director?
I cannot wait. Okay. And then my other question is about the table where we list out the other FAR values after the resolution in the packet. And I want you to go to page two and see if you can find 77 Dominga. Tell me when you find it.
Yep.
All right. Now go down a little. And do you see it again?
Oh, thank you.
And the second one has the same numbers as nine Bridge Court. And those seem to be the, you've got the 0.55 and then the 0.56. And I think you strike out that second 0.56. It seems to be an error. So, you know, we've really only got those far, those two up there, those 0.5-ish FAR levels. You following me?
Yeah, I see, I see the one. I see the 77.
So the second 77.
I don't see the second nine Bridge Court.
No, no, there's only one nine Bridge Court, but it has the exact same numbers as the second 77 Dominga. So.
Yeah, so, so I'm not sure what happened. We pull these up from the Marin County GIS system. And I'm gonna have to go back and check why that got pulled up. And the numbers matching up, they can match and be a different address. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying they're identical between the one listing for nine Bridge Court and the second listing for 77 Dominga. That does not seem likely. That seems like what.
That could be an error in their system, you know? I'd have to check on that.
If, in fact, the applicant does agree at the end of this hearing to postpone, that'll give you some time to do the QAQC on the table. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, nine Bridge Court.
That's it for me.
Commissioner Bella?
Yeah, I have a question regarding, well, so if the, if the applicant made the top floor a separate ADU, would the ADU count towards the floor area ratio calculation or not?
It would not.
It would not?
Yep.
Okay.
It's what's being done in many other communities for people that are at the maximum square footage to get their houses bigger. I hesitate to use the word abused, but that's what I'm gonna say. It's abusing the system.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I have one minor observation. And I think it was mentioned today again, so a .04 ratio represents 4%, not .04%. That's 100 times smaller.
Thank you.
With that, does the applicant want to present? Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Stuart Sommers, architect. And I think I'm gonna be your test case on sharing my screen, right? Is it, I'm in? Okay, let's see how it goes. All right, look at that. Okay, hey, thank you. First off, I would like to thank the staff, thank Linda. I've known Linda a very long time. She was thorough and she gave us a lot of guidance here. And of course, we had a bunch of discourse over this and we decided to bring it before you anyways, to see where we can go. And I would like to thank you, the commission. I serve in a similar role in San Rafael for the last almost 20 years and can keep going, I guess, and merge our design review board and planning commission. So I appreciate your time. I understand the decisions you have to make and that you're all volunteers. So I'll try to make this brief. I would like to introduce Gary and Jessica. They're the homeowners. Gary, you want to just come up and tell them why you're doing this? That would be helpful. And then I'll jump into the chat.
How are you guys? I'm Gary Hanley. My wife, Jessica, we are the owners of 152 Dominga. First, I want to thank you guys as well for your time tonight and the consideration you've put into this. We do appreciate that. Obviously, the reason we're here is for what we see to be a modest addition to what is a small house for a family of four. I don't know if you guys noticed the two little rugrats running around in the back, but those were mine. Anyway, just a little about ourself. I grew up here in Fairfax, went to school at St. Rita's, spent many of days at the creek and playground behind us, been a part of this community for a very long time. It's been our goal forever to get back here. We finally did in 2017, got our foot in the door of what we thought was a crazy housing market at the time. Little did we know, was gonna get even wilder. So what, what we see in this project is truly our ability to continue, you know, putting our roots down here in Fairfax. We see this as, as a big step in continuing, you know, raising our family here in this town. So I do appreciate, you know, your consideration tonight. And I hope what Stuart presents tonight will hopefully show you guys what we're doing is, is a viable project. Thank you.
Thanks. I like to put a face to, you know, what we're doing. I was in the same shoes, had a two-bedroom, one bath in San Rafael and started having kids and added to it just to be able to stay there. And so I totally appreciate it and my favorite kind of clients, actually. And today with the interest rates and everything and the craziness as you guys are witnessing, this is sort of the only way families can stick around. It's like people say, well, why don't you just move and go buy a bigger house? Well, that isn't as easy as, as it used to be because of, you're, you're losing money because of the interest rates. So that's my little narrative on why we're doing this. I don't think we need to go through the design terribly unless the commission has questions. I think Linda pretty clearly stated that, you know, we, we did a nice design. Through all my experience as an architect and design review, I'm pretty acutely aware of what it takes to do an articulated, well-designed upper level because upper levels can be very controversial. So I take it very seriously to step them in, tuck them into roofs, lower the roof pitches, look at privacy issues. So I take it really seriously. So I'm hoping that at a minimum, you guys may agree that that portion of the project is not of issue. So if there is a specific design question, I'm certainly willing to, to listen. So I'm gonna just scroll through the design and get to really what the big topic is. And I can come back to this if anybody's got questions. So, and I'm hoping everybody went out and took a look at the story poles and walked around the neighborhood. So, so we're talking about the FAR exception. And I went through that table also and, you know, I, I look at it a little differently because if I dissect it with the lots that are of similar size, it's alarming that 35% or more have the FARs of .44 or higher. So it's not, you know, 15% or 10%, but you guys can do your own math if you go through the table and dissect it by lot size. And these lots that are encumbered, because essentially have been, been downzoned because of zoning change, they're all at a much higher FAR and 35% are at or higher than what we're asking for. So when it comes to equity in the neighborhood, I, I think that we're, we're in the mix with a great deal of what Dominga is. And as I walk up and down Dominga and I think about FAR, FAR predominantly is a mechanism to control bulk and mass so people don't build McMansions. And I get it and I, and I appreciate it. And I think it is valid. It is ironic that if you dig down and dig a basement and still get your 800 square feet of, of living space below, that you can do that. It doesn't count as FAR. And some of the houses, including the immediate neighbors to them, they actually have that much more living space because they excavated. So I think it's a little unreasonable to expect people to excavate, but that's just the way your code's written. So this house on Dominga, I'm just gonna scroll through them real quick. Two-story, .44. Another two-story, .48. Another two-story. And this one is at .38, but it's deceiving because it's got an 800-square-foot garage, 754. So in terms of bulk and mass, I don't think that the FAR did the job on that one. This guy, .42. This one, which is tucked away nicely, is .45. So I think you kind of get the point I'm trying to make, that there are quite a few homes within a block of us. So I don't know what the immediate neighborhood means or neighborhood means, but the precedent is, is there. And I think a commission like yours, I, I, the feeling I'm getting is, is that Fairfax doesn't like to set precedents. And I find a different take on that also being someone in your shoes, that the entire process for an exception or variance is to look at each project on its merits. And there are times when you can grant stuff and it's not really setting a precedence because the next guy asking for the variance, he has to come before you also or she. And if the findings can't be made that, that, that particular project, that it wasn't appropriate, you can look at them on an individual basis. So I'm not afraid of precedence at all and I don't think anybody else should, should be. And then lastly, I'm, I'm having a little bit of a difference of opinion on the definition and your ordinance in the floor area exception. And, you know, maybe Cindy or someone that was here in 2019 when you guys passed it, might be able to shed some, shed some light on your intent. And there's, there are three conditions. And one of the conditions are that you're only gonna give a floor area exception out to a party that's got a lot of one acre or larger. And if you step back and think about it, that's probably the most inequitable thing I've ever read. Someone who owns a one-acre lot, we're gonna give you the exception. But someone who owns an encumbered 3,750-square-foot lot, sorry, we can't give you an equitable house because our ordinance says you have to have a one-acre lot. To me, it's actually punitive to the little guy. So I'm not sure that was, what the intent was. And also the language in the ordinance, I have this last slide. The language, as typed in the staff report, says it has to meet all these three conditions with some semicolons on it. Your zoning code actually says something slightly different when it comes to that one-acre lot. It has the word "or" in there. So, and I do dissect language when I look at codes. And that's really misleading because it says, you know, floor area of adjacent neighboring properties, check. We got that. Providing adequate off-street parking, yes, we got that. Or, or if the lot is one acre or greater in size. So I have a problem with that word "or" because I'm being told now in this meeting, in the staff report, that we have to meet all those conditions. So the word "or" at the, at a minimum, you guys need to get that word out of your zoning code because it's misleading to us, the public, and the design professionals. So I'm asking you, if that's what you passed and it said "or", then I think you have a pathway tonight to say yes to this project because the one-acre provision really is not applicable. And then I'm gonna ask you to go back and look at the merits of the project. Did we design it well? Is this well-articulated and meeting the intent of our FAR to control bulk and mass? Did we respect everybody? Is anybody against it? You know, I would like this family to be able to afford to build their project and stay in Fairfax. So I'm gonna hopefully ask you guys to all really think about if you really intended to not allow families to build a rational, reasonable upper level or expand their home at an FAR which is in line with 35% of their street. And I know it's really easy to say no, but I'm asking you to say yes. So that's all I have to say about this project. If you have questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions for the applicant? I see no hands. Oh, there's a hand. Commissioner Bella?
Yes, oops. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Okay. You, you know, I, sorry, no, no, I don't have a question. I have something for the, for the discussion period. Yep, sorry.
If I may ask, if there's questions or further comment at the end of the deliberation, if you want to bring me up to answer any questions. I know sometimes that you don't do that, but.
I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
If at the end of our deliberations, we were inclined to. If at the end of our deliberations, we were inclined to follow staff's advice despite what you've put forward and you're pointing out the use of or in the code. Is there a redesign that you could envision that would get you to the point four-zero FAR?
Well, I'm sure anything's possible. We would look at it, you know, it'd be tight. I don't know how, you know, with the way the stare comes up, but you know, there's always a way, but I don't think it's what we want to do nor if it's fair. But that's my opinion, of course. So, you know, and interesting that the commissioner brought up, you know, could we frame it as an ADU? And it doesn't count. So, you know, that, that's one of those things where even as a commissioner in San Rafael, it's like, it's always sort of a bitter pill to swallow and people bring stuff and you don't have any say in it. But, you know, I suppose we could look at that option as well. And just not be in this situation whatsoever. Maybe make it bigger. I don't know. But I don't, I don't think that's something, I don't just don't think that's something this commission or this town intended to force people to do. But.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
Yeah, we don't want to do that, but I guess is what I'm saying.
Commissioner Bella, you had your hand up again that you want to talk.
No, the question got answered. Thank you.
Do we have other questions? For the applicant? See none. We'll proceed with public comments.
Chair Rick Hamer, downtown Fairfax. Few things here is pay particular note to drawing A six where they depict what the shadowing of the adjoining property one forty-eight Dominga might be. Based on the orientation of that, there's really hardly any adverse effect to the immediately adjoining property, which is very close. It's already at point four bar. And if you look at drawing A seven, you'll see that the skyline, if you will, of that area matches up very well. So this actual proposal is more appropriate than the current Manfred roof structure that's there, matches up well. Dominga neighborhood is well noted for its Halloween celebration and children. We want to encourage families to be in the Dominga neighborhood. This is a vital part of the vibrancy of our town of Fairfax. This project will help preserve that. I wrote a short paper in college about Dominga, about how we could take what is currently allocated by the Rena numbers in School Street Plaza and simply superimpose them on Dominga. We wouldn't want that. That would just, it's possible through SB nine, but we wouldn't want it. Every time that the planning commission approves a project like this is one step away from that type of dystopia that we might set ourselves up for in our current state mandates. So I think that this project really fits well for that particular point. You can't compare Bridge Court to, to over by Creek Road, but what you can do is compare next door properties with each other, especially when one property doesn't impact its immediate neighbor that it would be if there was any sunshine or aerial trespass, if you will, that it's low impact and that's depicted in A six. So I really think that they've done a great job considering their neighbors on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, public comments? Anyone online?
I have no hands online, Coach Jensen.
Okay, we're closing it for the public comments, bringing it back to the commission for discussion. Thoughts? Commissioner Pfeffer?
Yeah, I appreciate and generally agree with the comments made by Rick Hamer. And when the architect was speaking and mentioned that issue with the code, that was something that I thought was odd reading it, but you know, just assumed it was copied correctly, the reference of the town code in the staff report and saw that the architect is, is correct. And there is, I think the, the exception process does read very differently. Going just pulling up the code online where it says essentially the exception may be granted to prevent or minimize inconsistencies with the floor area of adjacent or neighboring process properties to assist with the provision of adequate off-street parking or if the lot is one acre or greater in size. So to reading it in the code right now, to me, it looks like it's any one of those three. And then there's a proviso that says provided that the granting of such an exception would not be a grant of special privilege or be inconsistent with the intent of the general planner's zoning ordinance, et cetera. So that realized that may not make a that big a difference with the staff's opinion.
But what about the last sentence, which says an exception that meets all of the above conditions may be granted by the planning commission? You don't think that means that all of them have to be complied with? Or you do think that that sentence only complies to the maximum?
Yeah, I would read that to say no matter what exceptions you meet, if you meet all of them, still you're stuck at a maximum of five, five thousand. You know, I did not write this zoning code nor was I around when it most recently passed. It's actually closing on my house in June of that year. But yeah, I mean, I am very sympathetic with the applicant because I think if this is really just a issue with making the fine things, I read the findings differently. I don't particularly think it would be granting a special privilege. If it was a third story, you know, I'd go when I was living in Deer Park, would this was on my route that I would run from Hillside through to Ross and back. And if it was already like this, I would never have known that it didn't meet the FAR. It would not have looked out of the ordinary to me. When, you know, I go by there all the time. And so I don't, in my personal opinion, I don't think it's granting a special privilege or inconsistent with the intent. I think so currently a one-story property, plenty of two-story properties, very small lots, looks crowded as is, and I don't think it would look out, out of step with the rest of the neighborhood there. So for me, I think it's, I think it's a great design. I'm curious if there's other issues with the design or other reasons that people have that maybe we should hold on to this project, but I'm still, you know, not settled, but still thinking about the town code and and whether or not there, there is a way to make these findings.
Thank you. Others? Commissioner Newton?
Well, I appreciate everybody's close reading of the code and I agree. You know, that the language is ambiguous as to whether or not an exception may be granted on the basis of just one of the things listed in the first part of the code. You know, if you be granted solely to assist with the provision of adequate off-street parking, for example. I, I honestly don't know what the meaning of the last sentence is. If it doesn't mean that you need to have all three conditions in order to grant the request because, I mean, it doesn't even really make any sense if you need to grant the request. You know, such that you're granting it up to, first off, you're not going to get it beyond thirty-five hundred square feet, but even at that maximum, you know, the language means all three conditions. And, you know, so that just makes me as the lawyer, you know, I want to lean towards the specific language that says you have to meet all three conditions. Because, you know, there's too much or and question in the first sentence and the last one is a little bit more definitive. So you know, I agree though, it doesn't in light of the overall conditions, in light of the totality of the circumstances and you know, what is fair or not fair. I'd be interested in seeing if there is some wiggle room with the applicant to push this off for another month and clearly establish whether there is a means of reducing the FAR while I don't know, retaining the, the goals of the family and, and also looking more closely if possible, maybe asking the town attorney to help us understand the language of the code in the meantime as well. All right. I mean, that's not really an answer, but it's just sort of my gut over.
Thank you. Commissioner Bella?
Well, from, from the staff report, it seems pretty clear that, you know, there's, there's really not grounds to grant an exception to the FAR rule here. And as it says on page four, no planning commission has granted an FAR exception under the current FAR regulations for single-family residents. I don't think tonight we're, we're debating the utility of this particular zoning ordinance. We're trying to respond to this applicant's application and so, you know, I agree with everything about the, the kind of the beauty of the design. I think it's a great, it looks like a nice design. But that design doesn't merit, you know, trying to challenge this pretty, pretty thoroughly described part of the zoning ordinance. And so that's not a legitimate sort of argument for me. You know, I guess my, my kind of query to the building owner, you know, and then let me just say that I totally support you wanting to grow and expand your family here. I really support more families being able to live in Fairfax and grow their families in Fairfax. I love that. I totally support that. I think this is a much easier pathway for you to accomplish that goal, which is to do, you know, look, look into a, an ADU. The town of Fairfax allows eight hundred square feet under the ADU ordinance. That does not count towards your FAR. So I don't even know why we're having this debate about trying to sort of contest the validity of the zoning ordinance for FAR when there's a much easier pathway for you to accomplish your goal. And yeah, I guess my advice would be to the architect to get creative, really. And, and, and think about what's possible here to accomplish your client's goal. Yeah. So that's my point of view on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Swift?
So in looking at the requirements for the findings to grant the exception and the CUP, I can't see a way there either to grant an exception when I read the requirements. So I would ask the applicant if they were willing to come back and work with the planning department to see what can be done to meet the FAR in this case. We go from there. And I think, you know, the design and all is great. But we still have the FAR that I believe went into effect, I think in two thousand and two. So a lot of the houses in the area wouldn't have been.
I have to just clarify that I, you know, they changed the ADU regulations so many times on us so rapidly that I never trust myself. And so I just want to clarify that the ADUs are subject to the FAR, but the FAR regulation may not, may not require an ADU to be less than eight hundred and fifty square feet for a one-bedroom unit. So. But they're limited to eight hundred and fifty square feet. Decide to do an ADU.
Okay. So I would still ask the applicants to, if they were willing to come back in a month and look at if we can meet the FAR with the design.
You want to?
Go ahead. Yeah, I just, you know, would like the rest of the commission to, to consider, given what we're talking about, this is going from eleven hundred roughly square feet to sixteen something, it's like five hundred and fifteen more. Just heard that you can do an ADU up to eight hundred and fifty square feet. The project works as is. I could personally, I mean, again, I'm reading it. I, I think it makes less sense if, if to, to write the first sentence of this part of the code as is, if you are going to require, because it would say maybe granted, if it meets all of the following requirements, that's the normal thing. It's, but, but, and I, I do think it, it minimizes inconsistencies and assists with off-street parking. And I don't think it's a special privilege, but I understand folks disagree. But if we know that they, they could just do whatever to characterize this as an ADU and come back, it's just asking them to spend more money and waste more time for a project that otherwise works when we, it's just a I can't understand the harm of any sort of precedent like this. Again, it's going to come back before us. We could say this is a third story, you're, you're exceeding the FAR in this other way, your total square footage. I mean, how many times are we going to see projects that come in under seventeen hundred square feet with this sort of lot coverage and are exceeding the FAR? I think it's an unlikely circumstance. And I think it's a family in Fairfax trying to expand in a house that meets their needs. I grew up with three brothers, my family in an apartment building in a small apartment. I know it's difficult without that square footage. I, I just, I think it would be a silly silly decision to ask them to redesign or come back or just simply fill out more forms so that it says ADU instead of second story addition.
So, so maybe I can, you know, it could be that this is part of the code that has become antiquated, kind of like the covered parking requirement. It's been blown out of the water by the ADU regulations that the state is pushing on the different towns because you've talked about the fact that requiring garages for new houses, covered parking, those garages can be turned into ADUs. those garages can be turned into ADUs, right? With just a ministerial permit. The AD, this, this lot coverage, I mean, this floor area ratio was adopted when we started getting more and more people buying these little cottages in the, like the Dominga Avenue neighborhood and then wanting to expand them. And the town, you know, a lot of people move here because they say they love the quirky, little charming, smaller homes. Well, you, you'll lose them if you don't make people comply with the FAR. The more exceptions you grant, the more your houses are going to grow, right? But does it really matter? Because the state has pretty much eliminated, you know, a maximum FAR by allowing people to have ADUs that go over the FAR.
I would also just add that to me, this design does meet the charming little cottage in Fairfax vibe as even as remodeled.
I know. I, I just remember parts of San Anselmo that were all little cottages and now they're all two, they're all, they're all beautiful. They're all gorgeous. But they're all two stories. They're tall. They're close together with driveways. It's not the same neighborhood that it was, you know, twenty years ago, but change happens. And the state's pretty much eliminated our, limited, eliminated our ability to really stop our neighborhoods changing.
But I, to that point, though, I would disagree that because the state has, um, taken away some local control in relation to ADUs, that we would fall back on that. As a reason to grant exceptions to our code.
No, I, I still agree with my original recommendation, but I, what I was leaning towards is it's possible this is a section that either needs to be clarified or amended, right?
Yeah, just.
Commissioner Bella.
Oh, yes, just to follow on a comment. So that, yeah, that's my concern, too, is that no planning commission has granted an FAR exception. If we are the first commission to do so, we all of a sudden introduce all this uncertainty about the process. You know, and, and I, I think the thing we want to try to eliminate is sort of uncertainty around what is, you know, what is allowable and not allowable. So it doesn't make sense for me to, to pursue, you know, granting an exception, um, for, for that reason. Um, secondly, we're in a housing crisis. Um, you know, maybe we do need to take a look at the zoning ordinance to rethink it, given, given the state that the, the state is in now regarding housing. But, you know, given that there's another pretty clear ministerial approval pathway to accomplish the goal here without kind of creating more uncertainty in, in code interpretation. I, I, I agree with Linda on that. Um, it doesn't make sense to me to try to grant an exception for, for this.
Thank you. Yeah, this reminds me of, um, about two years ago, we had a project that was basically rebuilding the footprint, but the rear of the house was too close, too close to the creek. And then it became unclear how to interpret it. It had to be reconsidered three times. Um, while everybody liked the project. Um, so it sounds like everybody does like this design. Um, we do understand that the state has means to circumvent, uh, us regulating the FAR, but I think I also understand, and I think Commissioner Bella stated that very clear, that, uh, point four oh is point four oh. There's no reason not to stick to that. That just makes, unless there is one of those specific reasons. Um, so I'm not leaning one way or the other necessarily. I've been thinking if there is a way around it. And I don't really see it. The only thing that I, in the back of my mind is the one of the conditions is that you are allowed to exceed the FAR to accommodate, uh, the parking on the property. So that's true in this case. Um, in the sense that you are very limited to put the parking in. But it's unclear if you can hang your hat on that. To me, I, I'm, I'm not really sure about it.
Yeah, and I, I interpret that as if there's some, if there's some slope or something that requires, and you're recovered parking that's attached to the house somehow has to make, put you over the FAR. Right. Not, not to accommodate uncovered parking on the site. You know what I mean?
Yeah, true. Yeah, I know. And this is a flat lot. You can make that building any size you want. There's no specific limit on that. Um, is there a commissioner who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Swift, your mic is on.
I, I'd like to ask if the applicant would be willing to postpone this, uh, matter to next month.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a few questions, um, if that's okay, to, to the chair.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay. Um, number one, you know, I, I guess there's a fundamental difference of opinion just on what that ordinance says, and that's something you guys will have to clean up. Um, you know, the fact that only people with one-acre lots can have a floor area exception is an absurd notion. Um, so that's why that, that whole, you shouldn't even have a floor area exception process. This is what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that Fairfax doesn't want to have any exceptions. We're the first ones to ask for it on a pretty meager project. Um, my recommendation to this town would be to eliminate your exception process. Absolutely no exceptions. That would make it clear to all of us. And Linda could have looked at me and said, we don't allow that in this town. And then we would have been done. Make Linda's job much easier. But, um, I just don't know if that's what the intent was. So I was hoping Cindy or whoever was around when they wrote it. I don't think they intended that only people with one-acre lots are going to get a floor area exception, because that's a giveaway to people that can afford it. So that's just social commentary. Um, on the point of continuance, um, I have a question for staff. If we didn't have the upper level or if it was designed at forty percent, um, we'd still be back in front of this board because of the, um, the fifty percent remodel rule, correct?
Correct.
Okay. However, the whole upper level, as, um, pointed out by your commissioner, if we just decided, okay, we're making the whole upper level an ADU. Um, are we still coming back before this board or not? Or is that just a, or are we applying for a building permit?
Let me look at your floor plan. If you're do, if you're, if you're modifying the if you're physically altering.
Fifty percent of the lower floor.
Percent of the lower floor, you're back before the.
So it's ostensible. I could come back in front of this board with a fifty percent remodel of the lower floor. And that's my project. You'll approve it because there's real, really no reason not to. And then come back through and dovetail a, uh, eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU on top and just go straight to building permit with that because there's no discretionary review allowed on that upper level.
Or agree to the continuance, go back.
Oh, no, no, I'm just looking at.
I know. And I'm saying you could, you could, with your clients, discuss, you know, modifying to get it to the point four oh and maybe coming back, showing the commission that you could do an ADU in the same, you know, exterior with changing your access a little bit.
Yeah, my point is we're coming back here for some kind of.
You're coming back anyway.
So I could come back here with a forty percent reduced project. I'm right at the point four oh. I'm not asking for an exception. Presumably you guys approve it and then.
You can come back with the floor plan exceeding the.
Well, I, you know, I would, I would likely, I would likely just get it.
Connected and you just have like a, you have a.
But I would likely, in order to not even have that part of the conversation, I would likely come in with a forty percent FAR project. We're done. We get it approved. And then through the building permit process, I'm going to expand that thing. And it doesn't need to come back here because there's no discretionary review allowed on that ADU. And I know the, the FAR does count after the fact. I know they can couple the, the overall FAR in if they decide to expand the house again, then there's, that's a no-go because you get to actually count.
Right. But remember, the FAR applies to.
The main dwelling.
Well, no, the FA, the FAR applies, your ADU, if the FAR restricts you from being able to add on to, to, to create an eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU, you can exceed. But you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You'd have to convert a portion of the house and expand to get the ADU square footage.
Now, I've done.
Just add an eight.
I've been in eight hundred and fifty square foot pool house in Ross. That's an ADU. I, I know the game. So I just don't want to have to play it. It's, it's just unfortunate that we're in this situation due to what I think is a bad code. And we know codes take a long time to change, but I would urge Fairfax to revisit this and, you know, maybe from this meeting you'll go, oh, we do have a problem here and we need to address it, you know? So we don't end up with SB nine projects all over the place and fourplexes, you know? If these guys do this project, no one's ever going to do that to that site. If they move, if they move, someone might do it.
So it sounds like you're willing to come back?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
You're willing.
This is, this is just a tough nut.
Wait, are, are you and your clients willing to agree to a mutual continuance? Not to exceed ninety days, but we're continuing it to next month, date certain. But if you or the staff can't get ready by the next meeting, we can't stay in further than ninety days.
Okay, that's great. And then there's, is there a cost to my client in terms of additional fees for this or no?
No.
Okay, perfect. We are in agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. And, and I agree. It's an unfortunate situation. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Newton.
Um, Linda, can you do, uh, JADU? Can you do more than one ADU? Can you do two JADUs?
You can only do, you can do, you could only do two ADUs if you have a really large piece of property, ten thousand square feet or more. But on every site, you can have one ADU and one JADU. But you're still subject to the, you know.
Subject to FAR, but it could definitely be eight, one ADU plus a JADU.
Correct. That's what, that's kind of what happened at seventy-nine Wood Lane.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Go.
Okay, I was just gonna move. I needed to, uh, find the name of the item. Um, I would move to postpone, uh, agenda item one, which we heard is number two, uh, application number twenty-four oh six, uh, to allow further, uh, coordination and communication and creative decision-making by the applicant and our, uh, along with our planning department.
I'll second.
Newton?
Hi.
Bela?
Hi.
Swift?
Uh.
Pfeffer?
No.
Chair Jansen?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Uh, yes, motion passes. There is a ten-day, um.
It's a continuance, so there's nothing to appeal yet.
You're correct. Yep. My mistake.
To the chair, if I may. The next agenda items may have a lot of public comment. And I have set up the timer for three minutes if you choose to use it.
Okay, so that's item number three, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we'll move on to item number three. Um, I presume we'll have a staff report on that?
That is correct. And I am going to share my screen. Do I have permission? Okay.
Yes, it should be happening. It's slow.
Okay, there we go. Seen that view, okay. Here it is. Okay, first off, this gives me an opportunity to introduce, um, planning intern Alexander Robbins. Um, and he has been working with us for several months. And it's part of his course curriculum. Um, and he, uh, and so this is one of his last hurrahs. I think he, he might, we might try to get him back in the fall, but he's very, very busy with his studies. So, um, anyway, I, I will let him, um, do you want to say a few things about you, about, uh, what you're doing at San Francisco? And what you hope to achieve and, and all that?
Um, yeah, I'm a bachelor in a bachelor's program, um, for urban studies and planning at San Francisco State. Um, fall is my final semester. And, um, yeah, I've enjoyed my, my time here, the planning department. I'm glad San Francisco State has a internship requirement.
Welcome.
Thanks.
And as is evidenced by this PowerPoint presentation and discussion this evening, Alexander is a very good researcher on these topics. So he's done a lot of, uh, legwork in this and, and has helped us really accelerate it and, and bring it to you, um, probably maybe a little bit sooner than we could have normally. So.
And, and I do want to compliment you. I was sharing the PowerPoint, um, with a concerned community member in Marin, and they appreciated the work you did on this. So thank you.
And so I'm going to do a, a couple introductory slides and then I'll pass it off to Alexander to give him a little bit of practice with delivering PowerPoint presentations. And plus, he did all the research, so he is a lot more familiar with the material than I am at this point.
Great. We're very happy to see this.
So as far as, this is just a, a quick review of the contents. We'll, we'll go through kind of what is dark sky. There's kind of a dark sky organization out there. We'll describe that a little bit. Uh, there's several kind of concepts that go along with the dark sky. Um, and just, it's important to kind of understand all those characteristics. And then we'll talk about um, the difference between kind of what the, what we can do as a town and then what, what you can do, you know, as far as streets and street lighting. And what you can do as part of a regulatory document in terms of the ordinance. And then some implementation options with, um, and as we'll discuss this at the last slide, but just as a little teaser at this point, um, we would recommend kind of breaking into two pieces where we kind of set, um, policy. Um, and then maybe take that to the town council and get some feedback from the town council on how do they want to implement this? And then as a second step, come back with ordinance changes, um, so that we can make changes to the zoning code. And what that enables, uh, the planning commission to do is kind of have two bites of the apple. You kind of help the council frame their policy. And then you also then make a recommendation on the ordinance. Um, so anyway, we can talk about that and, and get feedback on that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alexander to kind of go through what is dark sky and go over some of the, um, some of the options for, for regulations and for regulating, um, the streetscape.
Hi. So, um, what is dark sky? Dark sky is an international independent third-party review and certification organization. They promote dark sky conditions and protection practices for increased night sky visibility. This organization supports the light pollution reduction techniques through outreach, advocacy and conservation. Local governments have two options for achieving a darker sky. A town can become certified as a dark sky place or the town can adopt light pollution production ordinances. The certification process can be lengthy with most towns taking one to three years to complete. Some certification requirements are listed here. Comprehensive lighting policy, full shielding of lights greater than a thousand lumens, light emission limits, overlighting policy, regulation of new light installation and illuminated sign restrictions. Community certification as a dark sky place allows the town to display the dark sky logo on town signs and websites, which enhances a dark sky awareness for both residents and visitors. This can encourage neighboring jurisdictions to focus on light pollution reduction. It can also increase tourism for people looking to appreciate the night sky.
And if I could say something just to this point, so what we understand is that Marin County did look at dark sky. They were a little bit discouraged, I guess I would say, because it is a pretty onerous, that it does have pretty onerous requirements just related to public streetlights. It requires like within five years, you have to replace all of your streetlights with dark sky compliant fixtures. So anyway, so it's, it's not necessarily something that the town wouldn't want to pursue, but just keep that in mind, which is why we kind of want to go to the, the council with the policy document first just to see how, if they want to dive into the deep end or wade in through the shallow end, basically. So we want to, kind of want to get a good feeling from the planning commission and then also from the council as to how aggressive the town wants to be with, with pursuing the dark sky. And that's not to say that you couldn't do light pollution reduction and kind of like ease into it versus just kind of taking the plunge and doing all of your streetlights within five years and all these other things. So anyway, I just wanted to break in and say that we're thinking about the spectrum of, of things that we can do.
The dark sky organization has published a list of five key lighting principles that support responsible outdoor lighting. The light must be useful, the light must be targeted. The light must also be low level, the light should be controlled, and finally, the light should be warm colored. Here are some key terms and concepts for this discussion, some of which I will expand upon in the coming slides. Brightness, light color, shielding, dimming curfews, timers, sky glow, light trespass and glare. Here is a, an example of unshielded garage light. It illustrates what excessive brightness looks like from a distance. Without shielding, the fixture produces an intense glare which can impede visibility. Shown here, the benefits of shielding, outdoor lighting in the corner, we can now see a person as well as other details. There are several ways to measure light and its corresponding temperature. Lumens are a measurement of how much light is generated, and Kelvin represents the color, which is based on the temperature, the light. As a quick rule, the higher the Kelvin, the whiter the light, and the brighter the light source, the more lumens it produces.
And the challenge with just that last thing is that the, in the past, particularly with streetlights, a lot of the streetlights, whether low-pressure sodium lights or high-pressure sodium lights, those tend to be in kind of the yellow-orange spectrum, which do not interfere as much with starlight. Now with the more, you know, the great in terms of energy efficiency and their, like, climate change reduction, all that, the LED lights are very good and popular with that respect. The problem with LED lights is that it is a challenge to get them into that yellow-orange range. And so LED lights tend to interfere, particularly with starlight, because they kind of get into that white-blue spectrum. So anyway, so it's all the more important to shield it and direct it down and to make sure that it's not too bright and it's focused just on where it needs to be. So anyway, so there's an extra challenge with, with LED lights that we have to pay attention to.
And here we see the same effects shielding has. Light shielding is an important aspect of reducing light pollution. Light fixtures can be purchased with shielding, or shielding can be added to existing light fixtures. Here we can see ways shielding on streetlights helps direct light to where it is needed while also preventing light pollution and glare. And this is the same shielding on wall-mounted lighting. Light pollution is excessive, misdirected, or obtrusive artificial light. Excessive light pollution has consequences. It limits visibility of the night sky, preventing people from stargazing. It disrupts ecosystems and wildlife, and it has been linked to adverse effects, health effects, and wastes energy. There's three ways the town can improve light pollution. Zoning ordinances can be created, public work standards can be changed, and public education can alter private property lighting and behaviors. The town can replace, I'm sorry, there. The town can replace and upgrade fixtures on public streets and city-owned facilities, while public education can play a critical role in promoting light pollution reduction techniques on private properties. While the goal is a reduction of unnecessary light, it is critical that there is enough light in the right places to ensure safety and security. Upgrading the town's existing lighting rapidly could, could be costly. Implementation could happen as bulbs go out or lights are replaced. So these are ordinance options. Do you want to cover this one?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, so when we do get to. When we do get to the ordinance, these are some common things that are in light pollution reduction ordinances. Of course, the shielding requirements where there's no off-site glare. You have to have cutoff shielding so that the light is cut off at the property line. The idea is to try to get the light level as close to zero at the property line as possible. There's, you can also have requirements related to the color temperature of the fixtures so that they're in that kind of, as close to the yellow-orange as you can get with LED, basically. Sign illumination, there's many ways to illuminate a sign. You can have it, we tried, in terms of light pollution, you try to avoid signs that are internally illuminated. And you want to have the, the lights that kind of are the external lights that shine on the sign and also cut off and directed at the sign so it doesn't spill. Athletic field, those are, you get the very bright lights for sporting events, which sometimes cannot be avoided. And also a note there, we do not regulate schools or school districts, so we have no control over school districts in that respect. So it'd just be athletic fields that the, the town has control over. And again, that, a lot of that is just the time, is like you, you only need the lights when the event is going on. Right-of-way lighting, of course, when you replace light fixtures along public streets, we can ensure that they have the cutoff fixtures and they're shielded so that they're aiming the light downward. Residential lighting is where you, is where you get into, a lot of that cannot be updated necessarily overnight, but you try to have education and then the code requirement in place so that when people do come in for new, new lighting, they can make sure that those are compliant with the code. And that, you know, can be a challenge because you are, you are telling people what they can or cannot do with their property and with their lighting. And then, so again, this is kind of what I was talking about at the beginning. We would recommend kind of a two-step process where we have a recommendation to the council basically on a streetlight policy. Determine kind of what, what is the effective replacement policy for how fast streetlights get replaced. There's, there's, there's currently some funding available to replace fixtures again with, with the LED fixtures for energy efficiency. Grant money that was obtained through climate change reduction policies and grants. So we do have some funding available, and we want to make sure that that's used in a way that would actually reduce light pollution. There is also regulatory policy is what type of zoning code amendments is the, it's the planning commission and the town council willing to implement. And then also, what do we want to make mandatory versus voluntary approaches? And then I would also throw in kind of what kind of, do we want to have an educational program that, that goes along with this? And then once we, then this is what we recommend, then once we get to have the town council discuss the policy and kind of like maybe even adopt a policy framework, then we would return to the planning commission with ordinance updates to make a recommendation. And then also the ongoing implementation with enforcement and education. And so with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're both available for, for questions. So if you have any hard ones, Alexander will answer those. I will take all the easy questions. So, yeah.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I had a question on just sort of the, the background research for this. Because it's my understanding that while, a while ago, it was a lot more difficult to find LED lights with a lower color temperature. Now it's relatively common, and there's plenty of smart LED bulbs that, that you change the, the color generally as, as well as allowing lower color temperatures. I think it's even common in Ikea now. They sell bedroom-specific LED lights that are ranged between two thousand and twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. So I think having the warmer color temperature is, is great, and I would just, I, I guess I would, has the town looked at the pricing difference between its current public lights and any of these options? Is that something that would be relatively simple to do? If, you know, it's part of our policy and the town council asks staff to look into that?
I, I'm not sure I know the answer to the question. I feel like, I think on, for regular bulbs, there, that you're right, there are a lot more yellow options. It's the streetlights that I'm not sure if they are available in that. Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
In addition to the shield, just on sort of the similar topic, in addition to shielding, sort of directing light down or preventing it from going in unintended directions, are there filter options to sort of like a gel you would use on a film set for a light? Are they those, because, you know, for all of our public lights that are colored, covered, are there sort of gels or some other kind of filter that just goes on and changes the color temperature?
Yeah, you, you can, you can filter, can filter the, the lights. And it's, it's just an extra, yeah, just an extra appliance that, or a cover that, that goes on.
But by filtering, do you mean shielding or putting something on, on the face of the light?
Well, it would be.
Because it's two different.
Yeah, you would, I think what Commissioner Pfeffer was talking about is, is the, the filter that goes on the light and makes it a different color as the light shines through. Now, you reduce the energy efficiency by doing that, but you do, you do change the, the color. And then you would also, I think the shielding would be automatic. You'd want, I'll always want to try to replace the, the streetlights in particular with the ones that kind of direct the light downward. And we have, we have a vast array of lighting fixtures out there now, some. Yeah, so they're, they're all kind of different right now. So the, moving forward, we would go towards the ones that are always going to be shielded down.
Commissioner Bella?
Yeah, question on, sorry if I missed it, if you covered this, but what, what other communities in Marin County have adopted dark sky ordinances was one question. And then I was glad to hear you brought up that there's, there's potentially funding to do this and just curious if you've done any, you know, analysis of what the, upgrading all of Town Fairfax's fixtures would cost relative to what are the size of the potential funding to do that?
For the jurisdictions, I believe West Marin is the only jurisdiction that has done some work with dark sky. I don't think, I'm not sure, I don't think they are certified currently.
I can probably answer that, that question. There is no jurisdiction currently in Marin County that has a comprehensive dark sky light ordinance. So this is something that, you know, when you look at Fairfax and its environmental ethos, that we should be leading the way on this. West Marin has a group that has been working on this for years. They're, they have a great dark sky, westmarindarksky.com website that is worth looking at, and they're trying to work with the county on a, on a lighting ordinance. But they've done a lot of work out there in the community, with the businesses, and their website's great. So they're a good resource. There's no jurisdiction in Marin that has done this. The closest to a town, city that has done something is the city of Brisbane. Recently approved a comprehensive lighting ordinance for their community. And if you Google Brisbane, California, and dark sky, you'll get to their webpage, which has a video on that, and I think they were approved in January. So those are kind of the two areas that either are working on it, West Marin, or has done something Brisbane. And I will say that I think Fairfax has a lot of Marin County community members and others looking at how we pursue this and, and what we do in this area.
Yeah, I like it. Fairfax could be the first. That's a great idea. Any other questions for staff?
Just, just following up on the question around the, the funding and cost to replace, you know, to kind of implement the ordinance, any sense of what the cost would be relative to what the, the grant monies are out there or funding sources?
Well, I do know that we have money, which is basically just a bulb replacement to replace existing high-pressure sodium with LED lights, kind of as I mentioned, from an energy efficiency standpoint. So we want to try to stay ahead of that with, with any dark sky efforts so that we're not like spending money and then going back a couple of years later and wishing that we would have used different bulbs. So, so I have been working, I have been talking to the Public Works Director to let him know this is coming so that we're not, so that we're not in our silos and we're coordinating. And then other than that, we, we, I've also talked to the Public Works Director. He said he, he believes that it would be relatively, I don't know if easy's the word, but it, it may, it would be possible to get kind of an inventory of the existing streetlights that are out there. Because the, the town doesn't have an electric company, so we don't, we, you know, we, we own the streetlights, but we don't operate them. So, but we could go through the, I think it's, I, I'm going to misspeak. I think it's DC Electric or something that does.
Well, and Marin Maps, if you go to Marin Maps and, and you can get, you can go in and circle an area in the county, and they have a streetlight database. So you can pull up, which I've done, all of the lights for Fairfax. And you can run a, a table for that. So it identifies the maker and the model and, and, you know, where they're located, the sodium lights, the whole nine yards. Very helpful.
Yes, I think that's where we'd want to start is kind of with, with the inventory that Cindy's discussing and, and work with our Public Works Director and, and make sure that as, as we're replacing bulbs or fixtures and so that we know, and I, and I don't know if it has, like, you know, what type of, do they have cutoff fixtures already? Are they Cobra Heads, you know, are they angling the lights, you know? So there's, there's probably a lot of, a lot of work to do, just kind of getting a handle on how big the, as Commissioner Bella's saying, is how, how big is this effort? And I think at this point, we don't really know how expensive it would be to replace all the streetlights. So we probably need to start there. Yeah.
Go ahead.
And when we're talking about the expense, it's with the assumption that we are trying to get specifically the dark side certification because if the town had a policy and adopted reg, you know, some sort of guidance, there would be no requirement to. guidance, there would be no requirement to in, there would not necessarily be a requirement to incur costs, but for trying to get this dark sky certification, which has certain requirements and
I think it is unlikely that we would get permission from the town council to replace all of our streetlights within five years to a dark sky compliant state. But um, we can certainly ask them if they want to do that, but
No, no, I guess I'm just asking because, you know, we have this bifurcated and we you, you know, the first step being recommending a policy. And we're talking about costs and funding, but the cost and funding that would be incurred by a policy would only be occurred if we're getting the certification. Because otherwise, there's no there's no, you don't have to replace the lights if you just don't want to, just because you have a policy saying that when we we should.
Yeah, I I I think that's that's and that's what we want to discuss with them. We we want to have the the planning commission should decide what we want to recommend and then have them have a you know, a frank and honest discussion about, you know, how how aggressive do you want to be with light pollution reduction? Um, and again, I I I think the analogy that I think fits best is you want to dive into the deep end and just go for it, which would be which would cost, um, which would have an expense, or do you want to kind of walk in through the shallow end and just slowly um, get into the deeper water?
Okay, before we go to public comments, um, one more thing, I think that's on the public streetlights, but there is a residential site. Um, right, there's a, there's probably more residential lights in town than there are public lights. Um, so if a policy is adopted, would that mean you get into the same question, right? New lights could be required to comply, but you can also make all lights comply. Um, what's the thinking in that direction?
Yeah, and that would be another policy decision to make is that it it could be um, as simple as new lights need to comply, and then we'd have an educational campaign that would be kind of the 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 easiest non-confrontational way to go. Um, and the the next level would be we would, we would ask people to replace their lights if they're if they're out of compliance. Um, or or and then, you know, we could do it on a kind of a complaint basis. Um, so anyway, those are the two extremes. So
So that's still in flux to be determined. Yeah, thank you. Um, with that, um, there are probably public comments on this topic. Anybody wants to talk to it? Please come forward. Go ahead. Mike, please.
My name is Bobby Simpson, and I just want to say I enthusiastically support, and I'm very excited to hear that you're entertaining this dark sky initiative. It's something I've been paying attention to for decades. And certainly ever since I've lived in Fairfax, which is about thirteen years now. And um, I think for many reasons, I've worked for the park service for thirty three years. There's a dark sky program out of our Washington office. It is just really important to me to be able to look up and see the stars, to be able to actually enjoy a night sky as I walk down the street or in a field without having this glow as much as possible. Now, um, wise lighting, is it the cr- is the the crust of the solution, I believe? Because it's not no lighting, because sometimes dark sky gives that connotation that we're not going to have any lights. It's going to be frighteningly dark. It's about using the wise use of lighting and shielding, as you've been talking about. Um, more and brighter is not necessarily safer. A classic nighttime driving example would be when you meet somebody with the blue, the brand new blue big trucks with LED lights. I don't know about you, but when they come my way, I have to actually hold my hand up so I can block it, so I can see the road and actually drive safely. So it might be safer for them as they're driving, but I'm a car that can barely see them. So it's not safer for either one of us. And um, I live on Scenic Road and um for years I've been bothered by how bright the lights are. The streetlights in particular, I'm not bothered by the hu- the home lights. I feel like the streetlights are just off the charts bright to the point where you're going around a corner and you can, all you can see are those lights. A car comes your way, all you can see are the lights. It's it's and it's it's um, it's so pervasive that literally I could read a book in my backyard side yard over fifty percent of my yard at night because of the streetlights alone. Literally, I would wear a broad rimmed hat to keep me from seeing these just giant lights shining down. So it's not just unpleasant as you're going, walking down the street or driving, but it's dangerous. So I think it's a real safety issue is where I'm headed. Um, trespass lighting is so extensive um that it actually enters the house that, you know, I was living in. It's when I bought the house, it had in the main bedroom wooden panels that slid over any window so that you could actually sleep at night because there was so much light coming streaming in that it was like it was daytime. So sleep interruption is a known hazard to health over time. Um, my neighbors and I have talked about it. It's it's definitely a big issue. And then when you consider the cost of transitioning to this new system, please consider the cost of, there's actually a lower um, I have, from what I understand, it's actually a lower cost to actually run the the um lights that are not as bright. And that's where I've I've actually worked with the Dark Sky West Marin Group, been to several of their meetings, support what they are up to. And uh, that's what I understand is over seven years that the cost involved in the actual installation of these new lights will be basically recouped. So um, please keep that in mind and also the effects of of uh artificial lighting, um, bright lighting on our wildlife and our health and our safety. If you do actually proceed with some kind of initiative, I'm happy to help in researching, et cetera. There has been some research by Dark Sky West Marin in terms of locating all of the streetlights in the county. There's a database that's like very easy to find that information and each light is identified about what type it is, whether it's the 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 gas ones or the LED ones, et cetera. So I think that would be pretty simple. There's another Fairfax uh um resident, Anna Kondoff, who's a lighting specialist, is eager to, you know, she's wanting to pay attention to this, but she had a a conflict this evening and is not able to make it, but she's willing to help out as well. I would hope that if you do implement measures, if you could be very clear about what your goals are and your timelines. Um, I think that it's time is of the essence. Every, basically every year we're losing about seven, from what I've read, you're we're losing about seven percent of the of the ability to see the stars over time. You know, by a by the time a child turns eighteen, they are able to see about half of what we can see today. So in terms of the stars, I think it's a real issue. It's an invisible issue because it's not gotten a lot of attention. And I think Fairfax is part of the the larger whole of Marin County, and I think it would be wonderful if if we set the example. I applaud your efforts and your interest, and thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, any other speakers? Anybody online?
I do have hands online.
Okay, we go to online.
Peggy, please go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Peggy Day and I'm one of the founders of Dark Sky West Marin. And um, I am just totally moved by what you have done in such a short time in Fairfax, that you've brought this to the council and that and that you uh, you're you're moving faster than we did in some some respects and getting the uh court, the the cooperation to to look into an ordinance. Whether or not you become officially a dark sky, having an ordinance is going to make all the difference. And um, that's our, it's our latest roadblock and we're working really hard to bypass that. I have some if it's uh, we did some info, we did some research. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous here about the light bulbs and I looked, took a look at your light bulbs and ours. And your light LED light bulbs are identical to ours. So I know I've done a cost benefit analysis for replacing those light bulbs. The good news is that all of those bulbs have a warranty of ten years and they're ten years old. So the cost that you would have to pay would be to be two hundred and fifty dollars a bulb to replace those bulbs with an identical bulb. If you use this, the bulb that um, the uh, Leotech, the manufacturer is recommending, it does come in the lower, it is LED, it doesn't need a filter. It comes in the lower um Kelvins, be below three thousand and it's downward um cast and it also contains a shield to prevent trespass. And the cost for that is two hundred and fifty dollars. So it's money you would have been spending anyway to just doing the regular maintenance on your and replacement on your bulbs. So um, as far as the five year rule for um replacing the light bulbs, that's kind of mute because the light bulbs are being replaced anyway. And the if you, I was happy to hear someone say that you're going to replace the low the high pressure sodium with LED. The fixtures are the same, I'm I'm hearing from the manufacturer. So it's just a matter of plugging in the bulb, the light bulb that um, that Leotech is re- recommending. Um, and I bet I just want to give you a real quick update about our our, how we're dealing with compliance with the community, the businesses and the and the residents that we've just done a tremendous education out push out here. And with that, one by one by one, they're changing their lighting on their own. They're calling us for advice when they realize that they're, they have an up cast light, lighting a beautiful old oak tree or something, and we tell them how to do it, or we tell them why they need to be doing it. And um, and so we've had so much cooperation that we don't have to do any compliance in order to qualify for international dark sky. Really, our only roadblock right now is the county's reluctance to pass an ordinance. They think it's an unfavorable time to be passing an ordinance. Um, but we're, you know, we're going to bypass, we're going to get through that and we will have international dark sky. And um, I just think commend you all and congratulate you all for the hard work you're doing on this. And thank you for that wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rick. Rick, go ahead.
Um, hello, Count, um, Commissioner, uh, Rick Hamer, Downtown Fairfax. Um, I am um, I've been doing theatrical lighting for a number of years and uh, I'm a member of uh, the Illuminating Engineering Society. So uh, lighting is something that I I uh, am very interested in. Um, one of the things I pick up is um, here is one of the previous speakers had uh, mentioned about vehicular lighting and it really does not help very much if the road has a lot of traffic like Drake that the vehicular lighting, which is typically in the bluer wavelengths, is not going to give you very much bang for the buck. So you may consider associating uh adhering your policies to uh, the uh, certain zoning districts, for example, up scenic or something being a residential zone. Uh, you will get better effectiveness at dark sky by focusing your efforts there where there isn't much traffic and the lighting is background lighting. Um, one of the other things, of course, to think about is the effect on wildlife. It's very severe. Uh, we talked about sleep deprivation with uh, us people, but but uh, interfering with wildlife is one of the main concerns I would have. And we really need to stick to the uh, wavelengths, the below three thousand K twenty seven hundred. Um, that that helps that. And um, while you're working with LEDs, one of the other things that that may become a factor, at least uh, in the industry I'm in, is your power factor, which is the actual bang for the buck you get out of your electricity. LEDs are notoriously poor when it comes to power factor. So make sure you do your uh, when you're doing your calculations, make sure you uh, consider your your um true power, you know, you're the actual power that's being put to work rather than what the the uh, power that you send back to the utility, uh, that does nobody any good. And LEDs are particularly bad with those. So um, but I don't think there's any real problem in uh, lenses or or um shielding and such, but I do think that you would be uh, more more cost effective to focus on the outlying areas rather than the high traffic vehicular routes. Um, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Dice and following Dice will be Jody.
Okay, go ahead.
Dice, please go ahead.
Hi, um, you can hear me.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, this is, this is a Deely, not Dice. So um, I'm on Cascade Drive and um, I applaud you for getting this issue as far as you can and as far as you have. Um, and I also want to thank Norma Fregoso, former uh, planning commissioner who first introduced this concept at a planning commission many years ago for, you know, for bringing it to the fore. Um, so thanking Peggy for the timeline, ten years ago, the town council approved replacing pretty much all of the streetlights in town with these hugely uh, bright LEDs. At which point my house uh, was uh, turned into something like a used car lot from a street light pointing directly into my into my rooms. I had to buy blackout curtains to be able to to sleep and the fixtures apparently um, would would not accommodate shielding. So I think we're going to have to look at new fixtures as far as I know. I remember uh, John Reed making up some sort of fabricating something that might work. But um, apparently we were not able to do shielding that would direct the lights downward. Um, I think it's really important to do this. Um, I was doing some research and listened to someone who talked about how the 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 uh nighttime lights in his neighborhood, not here, but somewhere else were so bright that he listened to the birds stop singing at night and start singing again in the morning. And after these lights were installed, they sang all night long. So it's really important to the wildlife, the what the the birds changed their migration patterns over these bright lights. We can't see the stars. I think Fairfax would uh, it would be it would be wonderful if Fairfax were one of the leading um uh, guides in this effort to to give us back some dark skies. Um, and yes, it will cost, but there is a lot of money being spent elsewhere that probably is, you know, maybe not as important. Um, so anyway, applaud you. Keep going. If there's any support I can give you or any help I can give, I'll volunteer time. Um, I guess that's all I have to say, disjointed as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jody. Jody, please go ahead.
Uh, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Um, Jody Timms Cascade Drive. I just want to uh, throw my enthusiasm into the ring here. Um, I uh, because of my own remodel project, have been looking at dark sky compliant outdoor fixtures. There aren't really that many and I ended up buying one. I'm not very, I'm not very excited about the design of, but I love the idea. I absolutely love the idea. Went to the dark sky website and uh, you know, uh, learned a ton. Then they also happened to have a webinar in Chicago that I zoomed in on about dark skies. Um, and these ordinances and issues were uh, by an astronomer at a planetarium there. I'm going to send you guys the link in case you want to watch it because it was really uh, it was really inspiring. And so I think there's And so I think there's, I'm excited too for Fairfax not only to be potentially the first, but for all the work that obviously a number of you have done and community members have done to move in this direction already. So I'm, I, I, as the Chair of the Fairfax Climate Action Committee, I've been in touch with some of the other sustainability and climate action government groups. And I did get an email back from Bob Brown and he mentioned that when he was Director in San Rafael and Nevada, both cities did consider dark sky ordinances and decided not to pursue them. But some of the reasons he listed, I think, illustrate the lack of knowledge and information about safety and lighting and really what is safe lighting, which Alexander covered, I think, really well based on some of those slides. So I think it's just a super wonderful idea. I'd love to see the town council take a broad look at it. And then for the planning commission to, you know, obviously there's lots of ways it can be written and regulated, both residentially or framed, residentially and commercially. But I think it's a super great idea. I was very moved by the fact that the webinar I watched, they talked about the 1,000 birds that all died in one night in Chicago because of a large building that had lights on all night as some kind of promotional event. And there were just dead birds everywhere the next morning. So I think what it does, the wildlife issues are incredibly important to many of us in Fairfax. Also, they showed a lot of lights up on trees, you know, the ones that are at the base and flash up. And the trees that had the most light had the, were in not good health. It kills the insects and the, the good biodiversity that's part of vegetation. So I think there's just a whole slew of reasons to move in this way, not to mention climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, savings, et cetera. So I'm super excited and I'm glad you guys are looking at it and I'm totally behind it. So thank you very much for all the work you're doing and consideration you're giving us.
Thank you. Do we have more speakers?
I see no more hands online.
Okay, with that, we'll close for public comments, bringing it back to the commission. Any additional comments?
Yeah, so I think Deb Benson mentioned Norma Fregoso, the planning commissioner. So back in 2018, we had a master student from the Marin Environmental Forum come and do a presentation on dark sky, the causes of light pollution, its effect in some ways to minimize the impacts of light pollution. In 2018 through many months of 2019, the Planning Commission held priority workshops based on what was in the general plan for Fairfax. And part of that was in relation to the conservation element. We came up with the need to review the town's lighting policies to limit light pollution and protection of our wildlife within all areas of the town. Our conservation element includes wildlife conservation, not only within the town, but also looking at the Fairfax planning area. We've talked about the effects of light pollution and many people have touched upon those. It disrupts ecosystems. It impacts amphibians, birds, mammals, insects and plants. Folks have mentioned, Peggy Day mentioned a question she had from somebody in West Marin about uplighting an oak tree and then letting that individual know. And I think Jody mentioned this as well, the impact that that has on the insects, on the tree and then the birds that go for the insects, you know, on the tree. It adversely affects human life and health and that's been documented. Deb Benson mentioned, and other members have mentioned trespass of our existing LED lights and their trespassing into homes, scenic cascade. There was one individual on Cascade that would just as soon have, I mean, in Deer Park, that would just as soon have the lights taken out because of the trespass. He'd rather have a dark road than having the LED lights we have. Just being an LED light doesn't make it dark sky compliant or meet the principles of dark sky. I think in our community, when you look at where our lights are, they're up very high on utility poles. There's formulas out there that will show you the range of light based on the height of a pole and the type of light that's there. They waste energy and therefore contribute to climate change. And so when you look at principles of outdoor lighting from dark sky, it talks about targeted, low-level, warm-colored, controlled lighting, lighting curfews, timers on lights in parking lots or in residents where they're motion-controlled. All those are principles that go into a dark sky community. And I mentioned, we've had complaints on the streetlights that we have that are LED. You go out there and many don't have any shields. Some may have one shield on one side of a light. I saw one that actually had shields on all three sides of the light. I don't know though, if that was sufficient for that area. It's unfortunate that we weren't able to review the capital improvement plan in May, but one of the items in that plan, and it was kind of mentioned, was the LED streetlight conversion, continuance of converting the remaining high-pressure sodium streetlights to LED. Those are what we have in the downtown area. So that's probably one concern for the community at large as far as what we do with our downtown lighting in general. But we also have those in, in other areas of the town. There's some out on Glen. I think when we look at, you know, I think it's instructive to look at what West Marin has done. I think it's also to the comment about converting or having residents convert existing lighting. You can look at what Brisbane has done in the ordinance where they've given time limits and things on that. I think as we approach this, and I hope that the council will look at this from a comprehensive approach to dark sky lighting in Fairfax. We have the residential zones. We also have the commercial zones. And how do we address lighting in the downtown area with businesses? We also have, as mentioned, public infrastructure. So we have streetlights, we have public facilities, we have the ballpark. I think for Fairfax to do a good job on this, we need to bring everybody to the table and it really does need to bring, to be a comprehensive effort on this for the town. I don't see certification as a need for us. I think to do the certification, you're going to still need a light ordinance. And I think the other requirements for certification include annual data collection and education, which would be a workload for the town. I think dark sky certification is great for areas like West Marin. And I believe West Marin was initially going to partner with the park together. And I think the park is doing it, you know, going through federal park channels. They're working that and then West Marin is trying to do it just for the West Marin areas. San Geronimo, there's an individual out there that on their own expense and if had little flyers or postcards made up that would pass around to residents there just to tell them to turn their lights off at nine o'clock to help with the dark sky. I don't see us having, you know, if we do this right, I don't see us changing that much what we see in the sky. But you can drive over White Hill and go stand in a parking lot in San Geronimo and you can look up and you'd be amazed at what you see because of the dark sky out there. But I think as probably Brisbane.
Commissioner, could, could you summarize your findings? Thank you.
So as far as what Brisbane did, I think their approach was every jurisdiction should be able to make some improvements. That helps the overall health. So I would just hope that as this goes to the council, that the council would look at walking down that path to a comprehensive lighting plan and ordinance for the town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Pfeffer?
Yep, I, I agree. I think just from a policy perspective, there's no good reason not to do it. I appreciate in, in Jody Timms' comments or mentioning that when talking to officials in other jurisdictions and hearing the reasons why people are typically opposed to this, it's generally issues of a lack of understanding or, or, you know, conflating and outdated beliefs because things about worries about safety. When there's actually research into it shows that these sorts of ordinances actually help improve. And I think the example we heard about the car lights and the LED lights is a good example. It's, it comes in your face and you're more distracted. You're more likely to get into an accident where you can't see because of the lights. And it's something that we don't really notice how it creeps up because it is insidious. You're just, your pupils will contract the more light there is. And so then you will need more light to improve your sight. So it's just the lower we get the baseline, the less light you then need to see for safety and for walking. And to the extent we can keep bringing our baseline down, I think it's, just helps everybody. You know, I understand the, the gut reaction of, oh, I don't want the town to tell me what I can do with my lights. But I think if all, you know, it's just a matter of getting people to understand. If you asked, hey, do you want your neighbors all to have their lights lower and not pouring into your house and you, you know, see without having, you know, a bunch of spotlights out in your backyard, be able to go and walk outside, they would say yes. And so it's sort of an understanding that this is a way to get everybody to cooperate for a goal that ultimately if achieved, everybody would prefer the outcome. Nobody wants, I wish my neighbors had a floodlight that poured onto my property whenever, you know, a deer walked by. And I think all of the benefits are understated because there isn't a lot of, there's no special interest group saying we should spend less on lights and tone everything down. What's the money support behind it? And you do see when there is sort of academic typically research into it, you do find out about all these benefits, about how uplighting does hurt trees because of insects. I know just because of an special interest, a lot of the issues with soil condition, you know, soil, all the nitrogen in it usually comes from bird experiment and other things like that. And when you have a brighter lit area, there's fewer insects, there's fewer birds too. There's fewer birds because they, there's not enough to eat, your soil degrades. There's a lot of things that people don't think about and there isn't money to research. The, the benefits, I think, it is safe to assume are greater than what we are thinking about now and it's already a sound policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Bella?
Yeah, just wanted to add, add my opinion of support for this. I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to have a lot of positive impact for wildlife, for, you know, for, for safety and for the experience of the town. I would love it if Fairfax could really provide leadership here. And thanks to everyone who's done the research and really built up the momentum for this. I think it's a wonderful initiative. And, and hopefully we can kind of deliver this in a way that is really going to be powerful and streamlined and make sense in terms of an education campaign or the incentives to really use the right type of lighting and, and also upgrade our, our kind of municipal systems to the, to the best, best standards. But I just wanted to, you know, reiterate or, or, or add my voice to the, those who totally support this. It's a great idea. I'd love it if we could provide leadership on it and have a really streamlined way of implementing this in our community.
Thank you. Well, I think it's kind of evident that the commission is in favor of this, of this effort. So I will not pile on on that. I completely agree to that. I want to point out just two minor things. I think in the very preliminary draft language in the staff report, I think if you talk about starlight, I would add wildlife to that because both are important. And the second one is there is, you know, the word avoided is used where there is unnecessary glare or uplight. I would use the words prohibited. And I think avoided is unenforceable. You don't want those things. Just two recommendations that I want to put in there. Unless there are additional comments, we could move on to our next topic. I don't see any hands popping up, so let's move on. That's staff report on the, an update on the Fairfax lumberyard fence.
I'll just give you a little background. So during open time for public speaking at your April 18th, 2024 meeting, Mrs. Ms. Susie Bergen of Spruce Road Residence advised the Planning Commission that it's been seven months since the commission approved the fence height variance design review permit and encroachment permit to allow Fairfax lumber to erect an eight-foot-tall fence along approximately 350 linear, linear feet of the yard's rear property line along Spruce Road. She expressed concern that the lumberyard might not follow through on their plans to erect the fence and asked the Planning Commission to assist them if possible to get the lumberyard to take action. At the end of the meeting, during Commissioner, Commissioner comments and requests, the commission asked staff to check with the lumberyard and provide them with an update on the lumberyard's progress towards getting the fence built. So this is our report. We spoke with the lumberyard and they advised us that they've already spent 25K on just getting through the planning process. They have gotten a lowest, the lowest bid they got for the labor to construct the fence was 37K with materials, for the labor, 37K and the materials at 25K to 30K. Their goal is to start construction in August and the employees will install the plant material and irrigation. So that's the update from lumberyard on the fence.
Thank you. Sounds like good news. Questions for staff? Seeing none? Do we have anybody in the public who'd like to speak to this? Please go ahead, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Scott. I live at 10 Spruce Road. And I am a member of the Spruce Road Coalition. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today regarding the fence project approved for Spruce Road. Since the fence project was approved last fall, we have diligently sought updates from all parties involved, including regular emails to the Planning Commission, to the town council and to Ace Hardware Fairfax Lumber. Unfortunately, to date, we have received little to no information on the project's progress. We have only been assured by Councilman Ackerman that he had, has had communication with Augie of Fairfax Lumber and that the construction will happen. This is all that we have heard. We urge for transparency and timely action. We urge for transparency and timely action to fulfill this commitment and have had several critical questions which remain unanswered until tonight. Our questions are, have been answered. We have been wondering if a bid had been accepted. It sounds like he's going to be doing that work himself or with his employees. There was another question of who will be performing the work that was answered as well tonight. What the estimate cost of the project? That has been answered. What the anticipated start date? August, it sounds like. And how long the project will take to complete, which we don't have answer for yet. These questions are crucial for us as residents, particularly, particularly because of the fugitive dust along Spruce Road coming in from the lumberyard and the visual blight that the existing rusted barbed wire fence provides. While the occasional watering of the lumberyard provides relief when the ground is wet, it is not a sustainable solution to the dust. I'm, I hope that the Planning Commission has been able to watch the video that we provided this week that shows the dust events that we have to withstand. I'm not sure if you're all able to see that. That's quite damning. While the Planning Commission's jurisdiction primarily concerns the fence height variance, we think that it's important to mention that the visual barrier provided by the existing trees significantly contributes to dust mitigation. And despite the vegetation regrowth since PG&E's extensive cutting two years ago, which has provided some relief, the recent cutting for a utility pole has once again worsened the visual blight and increased the dust infiltration into our neighborhood. This highlights the importance of preserving the existing trees as well as, as planting new ones as the Planning Commission approved last fall. We are deeply concerned about the prolonged delay in this process, especially with the onset of summer exasperating dust issues. While the fence alone won't solve all of our challenges, its completion is a critical step forward. We look forward to your response and swift action to move the fence project forward for the benefit of all of the residents of Spruce Road.
Thank you. And yes, we did see the video. Any other speakers? Anybody online?
I see no hands online.
Okay, we'll close public comments. Back to the Commission. Any statements?
I just want to say, yeah, that video is wild. And I remember when we first heard this, there was a discussion, you know, about why the, the yard can't be irrigated so that it's wet and prevents dust more often. And I think, you know, that before our extremely rainy winter and the drastic change in the, in the amount of water in our reservoirs and the, they just, the generally changed condition of the short term water outlook of Marin. I'm curious if that change in circumstance would affect in any way Fairfax Lumber's ability to, you know, do short term mitigation with increased water? Or if they are going to do replanting, maybe they could be encouraged, they've, you know, you know, the, the trees aren't being planted from seed if they're already in sort of a portable pot, you know, a bigger one that's going to be planted if they can just be moved sort of staged in the area and acquired earlier. I don't know what that does to the cost, but to help mitigate the dust because I, I, I understand their concern.
Yeah. Anybody else? Did we lose Commissioner Bella?
He's still online.
He's still online. Okay. Thanks. Okay, with that, yeah, I think we thank you staff for updating us. Looking forward to that start for that fence. I think that's gonna make a big relief for everybody to see that finally happening. So I hope that follows through. Let's, let's keep monitoring it and we'll keep an eye out. With that, we will move to agenda item five, meeting minutes from April 18th. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve meeting minutes from April 18th?
I'm going to approve the minutes from April 18th, 2024.
Bayla?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Chair Jansen?
Hi.
Minutes are approved. We'll move to the Planning Director's Report if we have one.
See here. Oh, I just wanted to mention that we are, a couple of things, we're moving forward with kind of housing element implementation items, just because it got adopted, doesn't mean that it's over. So anyway, we're going to be continuing to implement. We do have to do some updates to the general plan, as I may have mentioned before, to the safety elements and to the land use elements and to the town center element to kind of bring those into consistency with the housing element. And so we'll be, you'll see that in a few months. There's not quite as strict of a timeline on when those need to be adopted, but we are kind of targeting, you know, the end of the year or early in 2025 to have all those adopted. In addition, as Linda alluded to just slightly before, we, we've identified a few things in the, in the zoning ordinance which probably need to be changed, which are also kind of inconsistent with the state law or kind of interfere with housing element implementation. So we'll be bringing those forward as well. The, the other thing is that we do have, I think we have good news on the Planning Commissioner number front is that we have a couple of people that have applied to be on the Planning Commission and those will be, they have to be interviewed by the, the Council. And so those should be moving forward soon. So that should help us hopefully with our quorum issues that we occasionally run into.
That's good news.
Yes. Okay. And that's all I have. So.
Thank you. Yeah. And then as we learned tonight, you might have to do some additional work on the zoning ordinance to address the concerns that surfaced tonight. Hopefully it can be wrapped in there somehow.
Oh, you mean as far as the floor area ratios?
The FAR and the findings for variance, there seems to be some conflicting or ambiguous.
Ambiguous, yeah. Yep. Yeah, yeah, we have those written down here.
Thank you for your report. Commissioner comments? Anybody? Nobody? Okay. Then we'll move on. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Bayla?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Chair Jansen?
Hi.
Meeting adjourned.